I'm here.
Okay, so we should have started recording. That's very good. So yes, absolutely. I am delighted to just going to spotlight you. Yes, indeed. Introduce the the first speaker in this in this special session. Ellen Simon. And yes, can you share your screen or that kind of thing?
Yes.
Yeah, that's looking good.
Is that looking good?
That's looking absolutely great.
And you can hear me.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Patrick. And of course, I would like to start with thanking the organizers, Patrick, also Pat and Ricardo for for the invitation. I'm very honored to speak here at Manchester Phonology Meeting. And I'm also very happy about this special session. So thank you for that as well. And the title of my talk is "Robust, Flexible or Fuzzy: On the Acquisition of Phonological Representations." And before I start, I would like to thank my collaborator, Miriam Boosma, from Rotbord Universitie in Neemegen, with whom I've had a couple of brainstorm sessions about this talk. And so her her input has been much appreciated. She unfortunately can't be here at the moment, but she is thinking about it, I'm sure. So the way I interpreted the special session is that, in a way, the idea is to build a a bridge between phonological theory and acquisition studies. And if we look at a conference like Manchester Phonology Meeting, which, as it says on the website, is on anything phonological in any phonological framework, and acquisition studies conferences like New Sounds, which is on the acquisition of second language speech, we see that typically these are sort of attended by different people. We are different sets of people. And of course, there are people in the middle there. But it seems it seems a good idea to have a session building a bridge between these two, because of course, in acquisition studies, we need phonological theory. And and maybe acquisition studies can also inform us on some issues that are relevant to phonological theory. So this makes this session, in any case, for me, quite exciting. And second language acquisition studies deal with the question, of course, how do learners acquire a language, a language that is not their native language? And a crucial question there, of course, is, well, what needs to be acquired in in the first place? Many current L2 acquisition studies start from the acoustic input. If we look at prevalent speech learning models such as Flaggy's speech learning model, the revised version by Flaggy and Bone, perceptual assimilation model for L2 speech. We see that all these models start from the idea that phonetic details are relevant for the learning process. And there's a quote here from Flaggy and Bone's paper about the revised version of the speech learning model. Its aim is to account for how phonetics systems reorganize over the lifespan in response to the phonetic input received during naturalistic L2 learning. And now, of course, now, of course, sorry, there's something wrong with my slide here. Yep. And of course, we are faced with a lot of acoustic phonetic variation in the signal. But in order to build a lexicon, build lexical representations, we need to build or to build a lexicon, we need to build representations at a more abstract level. And this is, of course, recognized by these speech learning models. For instance, PAM L2 talks about phonological category membership. It aims to to predict how phones, how phonetic speech sounds are mapped onto native phonological categories. And now, so we need to build phonological representations, or you can call these phonological representations. And I'm going to talk about some studies that tell us a little bit more about what these representations look like across the lifespan. What do they look like in L1 speakers? What do they look like in bilingual or L2 speakers? And what should they look like? And when we say, what do they look like, we actually mean which properties do they have? Or which properties should they have? And when I was then going through some L2 acquisition studies, I noticed that very often people use the terms robust and flexible when it comes to phonological properties of phonological, sorry, properties of phonological representations. And I put some references there which use either or both of these terms in relation to phonological representations. Now, if robust means firm and strongly constructed, and flexible means easily modified, able to change, then a statement that something should be both at the same time seems, at least at the surface, a little bit paradoxical. But maybe it's not when it comes to phonological representations. I then paid some more attention to properties attributed to phonological representations in acquisition studies. And I came across quite a few properties or adjectives, descriptions of what phonological representations look like. Phonological representations need to be not only robust and flexible, but sometimes they're also described as being weak or of low quality, which presumably means they can also be of good quality. They are described as being holistic or global, but they can also be detailed or fine grained. And everybody seems to agree they should not be fuzzy. So I wondered, what exactly do these terms mean? What does it mean for a representation to be robust? Which of these can be combined at one time? Can you be, can a representation be robust and flexible at the same time? And how dynamic are these properties? Can a phonological representation go from fuzzy to robust? And how how would that happen? And so the question is whether language acquisition studies can inform us on these issues. So what do we actually know about phonological representations in typical and atypical monolingual development throughout the lifespan? In the, let's say, we call it pre-lexical phase before a lexicon has really been built. So infant studies, the early lexical stage, and then throughout childhood and adolescence into adulthood. And what do we know about phonological representations in a bilingual or a multilingual context? And so I've structured the remainder of this talk around three questions. And first one is, do L1 and L2 speakers develop phonological representations which gradually become more robust? How flexible are L1 and L2 speakers' phonological representations? How do we deal with variation, for instance? And what do we know about fuzzy phonological representations? Can we learn something from atypical language development? And so first, a question about robustness in typical monolingual development. And I won't go over all the details, of course, of the study. But the state of the art on infant perception research tells us that in the first six months of life, infants are able to auditorily discriminate a large number of native and non-native contrasts. There's also some sensitivity to rhythmic differences, sensitivity to timing features. But often, no language-specific patterns are observed in these first six months. In the second year of, second half year of life, this changes. We know that infants show perceptual attunement in that period. So they shift from language general to language-specific patterns of perception. And they become better at perceiving native contrasts as opposed to non-native contrasts. And this attunement, perceptual attunement, may be due to increased exposure as well as a growing knowledge of phonological status of the distinctions relevant in the native language. And I mentioned a relatively recent study here by Choi, Boosma, and Cutler on international adoptees. And so they did a, which which shed some some new light on the knowledge obtained by infants in the first six months of life, I think. And so they did a study with L1 Koreans who were adopted into Dutch families at a very early age, between three and five months or seventeen months and older. They had two groups. These people were unable to consciously retrieve any Korean. So they had not not been exposed to Korean after the age at which they were adopted. And it turned out, the study showed that these adoptees were significantly faster at relearning the language, at learning to perceive difficult phonetic contrasts in Korean compared to control participants. And the question then, of course, is, what kind of knowledge have they retained? Is it phonological knowledge? Is it a sensitivity to certain cues? Or is it knowledge of the importance of certain cues or dimensions in the L1? And it's it's clear that whatever they had acquired in the first few months of life, they have retained it and are somehow able to access it as adults. And in the early lexical stage, then, well, when children really start to develop a lexicon, it's clear that phonological representations need to be developed. And I put two examples here from the CLPF corpus by Bola Figgert and Klartje Leefeldt from the 90s, where a child produced the word "brick," meaning injection, as "dit", and the word "schune," meaning shoes, as "puma." Bola Figgert argues that this is, provides evidence for the fact that the child uses one place of articulation specification for the whole world, word, which is determined by the vowel, namely, a coronal and labial place of articulation, respectively. So she argues that children's early phonological representations are global. But at the same time, she also claims that the unanalyzed, pre-lexical phonetic representations may be detailed. It's just that not all of these details are used for storage, are stored once the children start building phonological representations. And what do we know then about later stages of L1 development? I won't discuss these studies. But as you can see, they've been conducted with children of different, in different age groups. And the overall conclusion, I think, can be that children's perception differs from that of adults. And children use acoustic cues in a different way. They are, for instance, they have more trouble with perceiving contrasts in what we can call non-optimal conditions. So when portions of the signal have been removed, or when background noise has been added. And children's perception is less categorical. So it seems that throughout childhood and even into adolescence, phonological representations in the L1 keep developing. And so far, for monolingual development, what do we know about early bilingual development? There's a nice study, actually, it's in a set of studies by Bosch and Sebastian Galiash on bilingual Catalan-Spanish infants. And Bola Sebastian Galiash found that at the age of four months, monolingual Catalan, monolingual Spanish, and bilingual Catalan-Spanish infants could perceive the contrast between the Catalan vowel contrast between "e" and "f", which does not occur in Spanish. However, by the age of eight months, only the Catalan monolinguals perceive the contrast. So there was a decline in the bilinguals, which they argue means that, which according to the authors, suggests that bilinguals have a shared perceptual space at that time, common to both languages. However, at the age of 12 months, they observed a recovery in the bilingual group. So at 12 months, also the Catalan bilingual, Catalan-Spanish bilinguals could perceive the contrast. And they argue that this recovery is caused by gains in lexical knowledge or continued and and/or, I suppose, continued exposure, which eventually leads to a bimodal distribution. And what about late L2 learner development then? And of course, in phonological acquisition, late does not really mean late, or it does not really mean, or it certainly does not mean old, but maybe after the age of four or after the age of six. What happens then? And while we know that acquiring L2 contrasts, which do not occur in the L1, are particularly difficult. We know there are many examples on famous difficult contrasts, such as the RL contrasts in English, which is difficult for L1 Chinese or Japanese listeners. There's the "a" contrast in English, which is difficult for L1 Dutch listeners, such as myself. So adults have difficulty with the perception. And this difficulty with perception also leads to inaccurate recognition of minimal pairs containing those sounds. So if learners have or lack robust categories in the L2, this is also going to hinder word recognition, of course. And that does not mean that learners cannot create new categories or that no new phonological representations can be developed. We know from, for instance, training studies on RML that listeners are able to greatly improve on the perception and word recognition of difficult L2 contrasts. Whether that means that late learners develop double phonological representations, so two sets of phonological representations, is less clear than some studies said. Well, the studies show mixed results. But I think that a general conclusion can be that, in any case, L2 listeners can, at least to some extent, apply different phoneme category boundaries with different language sets. So they don't rely on one single phoneme inventory, but the two systems are not independent either. And what is interesting is that some studies suggest that exposure to variation is necessary in order to build robust phonological categories. And there is, for instance, a study by Lyon in 2014 on the acquisition of Filipino English by Hong Kong Cantonese children, where they argue that the fact that the children are exposed to only one or sometimes two speakers of Filipino English, which in the study are foreign domestic workers, they're called foreign domestic workers. So children are exposed to only one or two speakers, which impedes the development of robust categories. And this ties in with a study by Livari on L1, where she suggests that people with larger social networks have more robust phonological representations. So this variation in the input seems to be necessary or crucial. And this is, of course, also interested for instructed language learning settings, where the input is, is, I would say, by by definition, a little bit impoverished or much impoverished. And so do we move towards robustness? Do phonological representations become more and more robust throughout our lives? I would say yes. Throughout the lifespan, perception becomes more categorical, less affected by non-optimal conditions through more exposure and an increasing lexicon. But persistent cross-linguistic interaction also suggests that building new, robust phonological representations in an L2 is hard. So if we're building phonological representations that become more and more robust throughout our lives, how does this then correspond to the requirement of flexibility? How flexible are phonological categories? In our L1, we are confronted or exposed to variation on a daily basis. We are constantly exposed to variation, different speakers, different accents, et cetera. And research has shown that in our native language, we are very well able to deal with variation. We're very able to perceptually adapt to this variation, whether this is novel talkers, regional variation, or L2 extended speech. We can shift the perceptual boundaries when we are listening to different accents in our L1. In fact, studies on phonetic alignment have also shown that we can also do it in production. So we can adapt or move the boundaries of our categories when we are adjusting our speech to that of our, to the accents of our conversational partners. Now, what about variation in the L2? How flexible are L2 phonological representations? And can they deal with variation? And can they be modulated by training? Well, we know that adoption to L2 speech in noise is problematic. That's one sort of variation, you could say. It's a non-optimal listening condition. And we know this from experimental studies, but also from experience, that listening to an L2 when there's background noise, for instance, can be really hard, even for highly proficient speakers. And this, of course, has to do with the fact that, as L2 learners, we have fewer, higher-level resources, such as we have a smaller lexicon, a small vocabulary. We also have a smaller array or knowledge of grammatical structures and perhaps also less robust phonological representations in the sense that we can perhaps not use, or we do perhaps not use, all relevant acoustic cues. And a study by Raanis and colleagues in 2013 then has shown that perceptual adaptation to novel L2 talkers is possible for L2 listeners. In fact, they did not find a difference in perceptual adaptation between L1 and L2 listeners. So as L2 listeners, we can do it. We can adjust our boundaries to novel speakers of an L2. But in relation to that, there's an interesting study by Brugman and Cutler, who showed that Dutch immigrants to Australia could show perceptual adaptation to novel L2 talkers, but not to novel L1 talkers, presumably because the number of speakers, so the number of Dutch speakers that these talk to was very, very small. So there was was sort of lack of variation in in the L1 of these speakers. So we can say perceptual adaptation is possible in the L1 and the L2, but it needs to be practiced through regular exposure to variation. And so on the one hand, we know that building phonological representations in an L2 is very difficult. And there's often a sort of fossilization. I'm not sure whether I should use that term. But it's very hard to perceive non-native contrasts. And even even highly proficient speakers or learners still have trouble with that. On the other hand, we also have a lot of studies that have, or that point in the direction of a great plasticity. For instance, there's Liatall and Mormon and Thompson, who give overviews of training studies, most of which use the high variability phonetic training paradigm, which basically means that listeners or participants are exposed to stimuli by different speakers. And these studies generally show positive effects on L2 perception. A question is, however, how robust these effects are? To what extent are they generalizable? To what extent do they survive in not non-optimal conditions? So for instance, when noise is added to the stimuli. And also, perhaps most importantly, to what extent is there retention? So how long do these effects of the training last? And this last point is, is of course, relevant because it gives us information on whether these trainings actually have just a short-term effects on the perception or a longer-term effects on really the phonological representations. And there's a study by Boosma, Flotkoven, and Escudillo, which deals with unsupervised training. So all of the HPT training studies that I just mentioned are actually explicit training studies in the sense that category labels are used during the training, are provided to the participants. In unsupervised training, no category labels are used. And Boosma and Al found that adults can shift boundaries between categories with implicitly supervised training as well as with unsupervised pre-attentive training. So listeners were then just exposed to 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 videos while while hearing the stimuli, but nothing was said about the category, categories, nothing was said about the training. Category shift, this seems to be possible for adults learners. So are phonological representations flexible in L1 listeners? I would say, yes, they're very flexible. In L2 listeners, they're very flexible if there has been sufficient exposure. And phonological representations can be modulated, it seems, by both explicit and implicit training. But more research is needed on the long-term effects. And finally, then, something about fuzzy categories. And the term fuzzy and fuzziness in relation to phonological representations is mostly used in when it comes, when when people are talking about atypical monolingual development. And atypical development in oral communication and or reading and writing is associated with low phonological abilities. And these abilities are assessed through phonological awareness tasks, such as phoneme deletion tasks or phonological memory tasks, on which these individuals typically perform low. And now, the cause of these low phonological abilities is attributed to a deviant degree of specificity in phonological representations. Glasson and Leito argue that these individuals have low-quality or fuzzy phonological representations, meaning that there are phonemic categories or phonological categories, but there's a large degree of overlap between the categories. So there's like a whole gray zone where a speech sound can go to category A or category B. A recent study by Liatall argues, on the contrast or on the contrary, that these individuals' phonological representations are overspecified. So they argue that So they argue that uh in fact, um uh people who show atypical uh uh language development um may um perceive um or may create too many categories. Uh so they call this allophonic perception. So for instance, for English, uh which has a voice, voiceless contrast, tada, they would store this contrast as a three-way contrast between pre-voiced um uh stops, which sometimes uh occur in English, uh short leg and long leg stops. Um and they did an eye-tracking study um which uh showed that um uh these individuals had a very high uh subphonemic uh sensitivity, which uh inversely correlated with their performance on uh phonological uh skills tasks. So um to uh come to the uh conclusions, um robust uh representations are crucial for word recognition. Flexibility is crucial for dealing with variation, for instance, in an L one um uh as we have, uh have to deal with different speakers and different accents. Um and um these conclusions actually hold both for L one and L two listening, because I believe that the s- the same mechanisms are used. Only L two learners um have uh are have less exposure, uh less variation in their exposure, have a smaller lexicon, uh et cetera. Uh so perhaps we can define uh robustness then as um reliable phonological encoding at the lexical level and precise phonetic representations, whereas flexibility um can be defined as the ability to shift uh boundaries at the uh phonetic uh level. Uh for the development of robust and uh flexical, fl- flexible uh representation, uh exposure needs to be sufficient, and it needs to be sufficiently varied. And phonological representations can develop uh in time through vocabulary growth, uh exposure and uh training. And this holds both for uh basically both for L one and L two uh listening. Um a few directions for uh future uh research. Of course, there are many uh directions, but um I just mentioned uh four here. Um I think more research is needed on a three or L uh X uh acquisition. Um and there's a need uh in this field for a focus on uh perception as uh Cabral, Yamara and Ramble um have um uh uh claimed uh in two thousand sixteen. Uh we, uh most previous research on multilingual acquisition has focused on progressive transfer, has focused on production, and there's some methodological uh limitations, uh most notably the uh typically the low uh number of um small number of uh participants in these studies. Um in training studies, I think there's a need for focus on retention to examine uh the duration of the effects, whether it's uh short-term or really long-term uh effects which affect the underlying uh representations. Um and then, yeah, personally, I'm uh interested uh at the moment in how uh L two listeners uh deal with uh variation. And um I'm setting up a project uh with uh my colleague Shield Rubika on uh which is called Listening to Accents, in which we would like to examine how L one Dutch listeners deal with regional and uh non-native extended L two English speech. And we'd like to um set up two experiments, uh one on uh free uh allophonic variation uh uh for the T in English and uh with one on uh how uh L one Dutch listeners would deal with vowel variation in uh Australian English. Um and then uh finally, um I think there's also more need uh for uh research, uh or there's a need for more research on uh the nature of uh phonological um representations in atypical uh development. Um I think there's still uh quite a lot of uh work that needs to be done in that area. Um but I also wanted to mention here that um people don't uh always seem to agree on the usefulness of phonological representations for um uh for this population and specifically for uh clinicians. And um I put two uh quotes there, uh which I'm not going to read, but uh they're anti uh technical. Um one is saying that um phonological representations are interesting to both clinicians and researchers. And the other one uh is saying that the explanatory power of phonological representations for the clinician uh is, in fact, um very weak. Um and I think um that if um if we want to do more research on this population, especially on uh atypically developing uh children who are already uh overtested and have to do a lot of tests and training and therapy anyway, then uh maybe we need to know for sure that uh if we're doing research on this population, it's going to um be relevant, or it's going to uh eventually uh um make uh the uh therapy and the interventions uh more uh successful. Um so this is um the end uh of my talk, and I've already thanked Miriam Bosma. I do it again. I would also like to thank uh Shield Rubika from my own uh research group for um helpful uh comments on this talk earlier. So thank you.
Well, thank you, absolutely, yes, indeed, thank you very much. We may applaud, uh we may applaud, absolutely, although it will be, it will seem, although we're not gonna have questions straight away. Uh but that um that is the plan, but thank you, thank you very much, very um, yeah. So much stuff to think about, a great way to start the session, I think, absolutely. Um yeah, so um I will stop that one.